Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of Wednesday, April 24th, 2024. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Whoever was responsible for the rain stopping for a couple of days, thank you in particular. For tonight's agenda, for the folks at home, we have, as we often do, a very long agenda. It's our second meeting of the month. We have three public hearings. The first one is regarding a potential application for the Restore New York Communities Grant Application, which is for an adaptive reuse of one of the barns on the former Cooking Ham farm properties. At 7:45, we have a proposed amendment to the Tivoli Fire Protection District Service Agreement. It's just a modification of the agreement to allow for a ARPA contribution towards the Tivoli Firehouse Expansion Project. Let's hope technology will cooperate, so I can show you the rest of this. There we go. At 7:55, we have concurrent public hearings on several moratorium hardship waivers. Let me go right into our agenda. That's the Restore New York Grant, the amendment, the waivers. We have a resolution to amend the performance bonds as it relates to the tradition development. We've got a resolution to authorize public bid for Cooking Ham Trails. We are putting split rail fencing alongside the trails to help delineate. We're also improving those trails with stone dust to make them solid and secure. We've got a presentation by the Housing Committee. We have members of the Housing Committee here tonight. We'll also have a change order for some of the work being done at St. Margaret's. And we are, because we purchased our own mini excavator for the Highway Department, we are going to opt out of a shared mini excavator that we've been using for several years now with other municipalities. We'll have a brief discussion about a county grant program as it relates to composting. And then if we have time, we'll discuss the Department Board and Committee reports. Otherwise, if we don't get to that, please know that it's all available on the town's website, which is, once again, a PSA to remind folks. Many years ago, we changed our website so that you could sign up for notifications. You can be sent, if you are so desirous. All of these documents in advance of the town meetings, in the case of tonight, there's, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of 350 pages, all told in total. And you can have all that information available to you. Okay. I'm gonna skip over announcements for now, but just maybe cover the first one. Typically, the school comes to us and makes a presentation on their budget proposal sometime late April, early May. They're doing something different this year. They're having a budget expo, where they're having a presentation for anyone who wants to come to understand some of the specifics associated with the propositions in front of the voters. Okay, and here are some of the other announcements. We've got some VFW and Village Garden Club events, hazardous waste with the county. And here we are, just after 7:39, with our first public hearing. Deanna, would you be kind enough to read that public hearing notice?
Notice of Public Hearing. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on April 24th, 2024, at 7:35 PM local time, at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, to hear all interested persons regarding a Restore New York Communities Initiative Grant Application. The purpose of the hearing is to obtain citizens' views and comments relative to the submission of an application to Empire State Development for financial assistance under the Restore New York Communities Initiative and regarding the property assessment list prepared in connection with the application. Proposed project includes the adaptive commercial reuse of an existing Dutch barn to create approximately 6,000 square feet of commercial space. The following properties will be submitted for consideration. 7610 North Broadway, Red Hook, being parcel four, as shown on FM 12797. Existing vacant property, proposed for adaptive commercial reuse of an existing barn on site. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance by the above address or by phone, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated March 12th, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this topic? Gary?
I believe the topic is that barn that's on the Cooking Ham property. And you're trying to seek a grant. To do that, you're gonna have to filing fees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But in the reading, you mentioned something about a farm market. And I have a list of 12 farm and markets in our vicinity. And I think we would be hurting them if we went in that direction. We have Stickle Stand in Tivoli, Mead Orchard, Rose Hill Farm, Montgomery Place, Hardiman's, Northwind, Greg, Kasecki, Migliorelli, Hill and Hollow, Darrell and Dem Flowers, and the other one was Sawkill. He's presently out of business. But you have to consider all of these. You set up another farm stand, you're gonna be affecting these people. That's basically my statement. Go after the grant if you want. Good luck.
Thanks, Gary. Anyone else like to comment on this application?
Why do we feel we need it if we have that much in town? Just, I don't know anything about it, Robert.
Bob, did you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, I will. I just, I just, let me start by saying I know nothing about this one. As it pertains to me, but I just don't.
Could I ask you a favor and start by saying your name and then say that?
Okay, I'm Bob Ross. I've been in town forever. Just about everybody in this room knows me, okay? I just, I haven't paid any attention. Why we put it in the farm stand if we have that many? That just, I don't know.
Okay.
So I'm sure you can answer that and then fill the things.
I can. We're not applying for a farm stand. We're applying for an adaptive reuse, something like a farm-to-table restaurant or something like that. We're not applying for a farm stand. This is a very large grant, and we're looking to have something that would work well with the area farms and something that potentially even could be working with the remainder of the farm on that side as well, all right? But the grant programs that we're tapping into all have a stipulation that there be a commercial component. And so we're looking to take that barn, which frankly wasn't being used necessarily to its fullest agricultural use, as it may have been 100 years ago. And we're looking to inject capital into it and, you know, create another commercial space.
So, who's gonna own it?
Well, that's a very good question, Kenny. When it's all said and done, it will probably be sold by RUPCO for agricultural purposes. That's the plan anyway, but our hope is that it's something that works well with the community and certainly we'll restore that.
So you really don't have a plan. You don't have a plan.
Restore that barn. I think we have a pretty good plan, considering what the options were.
But then there lies the other issue, is RUPCO doing the apartments?
And more insurance.
The lower end apartments and the other housing? And now the barn you're throwing in the deal? I didn't know that was part of the deal for RUPCO too.
Yeah, it always was, yeah.
From the beginning?
Yes, from the beginning, yeah. Anyone else like to comment on this application? Okay. Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Seconded.
All in favor? Giulio?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, we are at 7:45. Why don't we go right into our next public hearing, please, Deanna? It's on the Tivoli, the amendment to the Tivoli Fire Service Agreement.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on April 24th, 2024, at 7:45 o'clock PM local time, at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, to hear all interested persons on a proposed amendment number two to Fire Protection District Fire Service Agreement between the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Tivoli, 23 and 24. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the town clerk. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed agreement are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated March 27th, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Wait, I think I made that one.
Well, whatever.
You guys are getting tricky on me. All in favor, Giulio?
You should start saying aye.
William?
Aye.
Christine seconded.
So if you did.
I seconded.
And you say aye, okay.
Very good. And just to remind folks at home, our intention is to allocate $250,000 worth of our ARPA money towards the expansion project of the Tivoli Firehouse. As you sure know, that they have reached out to all levels of government to find support, the private sector, and so on and so forth. So we wanna make our contribution, obviously, because the Tivoli Fire District extends outside of the village and into the municipality as well. So we need to amend our contract so that it allows for that contribution between now and the end of the year. Would anybody like to comment on this public hearing? Going once, going twice. Well, I'll make a remark, which is to say, isn't it wonderful that we, unlike many municipalities, have so many dedicated volunteer firefighters at the Tivoli Fire Department, such that they need to expand, you know, for other reasons, not just the numbers? But it's really a testament to the terrific work that they're doing there, and this is a good problem to have. So I hope that, you know, the community will rally around. And if it turns out, as the project develops and builds out, if they need additional funds, if you find it in your hearts and in your bank accounts to make contributions, then of course, I'm sure that would be appreciated as well. Okay, hearing no public comments on the amendment to the Tivoli Fire Contract. I make a motion that we close that public hearing as well.
Seconded.
All in favor? Jacob?
Aye.
Giulio?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Very good. Well, we are too early for our next public hearing, so why don't we entertain Resolution Number... Deanna, would you be kind enough to...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
No, sorry, twenty-one. I have to tell you. Wait a second. Twenty-one.
Twenty-four. It's a resolution authorizing the Restore New York Communities Initiative Grant Application. And we're talking about the grant that is available under around eight of Restore New York Communities Initiative. And it's designed for purposes like this, where you have either a structure or an area of the community that needs an injection of capital in order to bring it back to commercial use. And these wonderful historic barns, you know, they are lovely. I happen to have some barns on my property as well, but I can tell you sometimes that utility of the older barns isn't what the newer ones are. And so if we wanna preserve them, then obviously we need to give it a life and inject it with something that has some kind of return to it. And so this capital, if we are granted this opportunity, will hopefully do exactly that. The grant does have a requirement for a 10% m. And I so move Resolution Number 21 of 2024. Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, thank you, William. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Giulio Solomon?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
All right, well, we still have a few minutes. Why don't we go to Resolution Number 22, which is approving the amendment, the second amendment, actually, to the Town of Red Hook Fire Protection District Fire Service Agreement between the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Tivoli. And for the public, a reminder, we have two distinct districts. One is serviced by Tivoli Fire and the other is serviced by Red Hook Fire. So the amendment is to provide for a capital project amount of $250,000 from ARPA funding for the Tivoli Firehouse Expansion Project. And there are the details related to the resolution. And I would love to move Resolution Number 22.
Seconded.
Thank you, Christine. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Giulio Solomon?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Well, we still have a couple of minutes. Keep moving right along. Okay, we're not there yet, are we? So let's go to... Number seven? Oh, yeah, let's go to the very exciting number seven, a change order related to the HVAC system at St. Margaret's. You don't watch the screen, you're very dizzy. Brandy? Would you mind just a few words on the change order as I try and move the PDF document?
Sure. So at St. Margaret's, as you know, there are HVAC upgrades that have been bid. And in the course of placing the condensing units, we coordinated with Chippewa, as the town is required to do. And Chippewa asked for the condensing units to be moved away from the building so that the integrity of the backside of the building was not modified more than necessary. So we talked with the contractor and they can move the... They were able to move the condensing units 25 feet away from the building. And so if you've been by there, you have seen probably some screened enclosures for those condensing units. The additional cost associated with extending the line sets out to the condensing units is what constitutes the change order. It's $5,150. I think I've got that off the top of my head. And the contractor has completed the work and did not realize he needed to submit a change work to us beforehand. So the work is installed. We've observed it. It's in good condition. The units are operable. We just need to account for this increased cost.
Okay, very good. And I'm almost there, I think. If you'd like, we'll get there.
Good description.
Yeah, that's a very good description. Thank you. There we go. Resolution Number 23. Authorizing change order for St. Margaret's HVAC installation. Work on St. Margaret's is progressing nicely. We hope later this year to be able to open it to the public. I think you'll be very pleased with what you see with that historic building. I so move Resolution 23, approving the change order. Is there a second? Jacob Testa?
Seconded. Yeah, I was gonna do it.
I do. Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Christine?
Aye.
Giulio?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, now the problem with scrolling all the way down there is now I have to scroll all the way back. Please don't look at the screen, you'll get nauseous. We are, in fact, at the point in time where we will have our concurrent public hearings on moratorium waiver applications. We received, timely, we received five of them. We believe four of them to be complete enough. We have enough information where we could at least consider taking action on them. And then we've received a couple new ones as well, subsequent to our last meeting. Uh, do, 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 okay. Would you be kind enough to read the public hearing notice by... Worked towards it.
Please take notice that a series of concurrent public hearings will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on April 24th, 2024, at 7:55 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter comes before the board at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on the applications received on the date set forth below from the applicant set forth below for a hardship waiver of the provisions of Local Law Number One of 2024 entitled "A Local Law Placing Moratorium on Applications in the TNDCC Subdistrict, on Applications for Subdivision in the AB District, and on Applications Affecting Wetlands, adopted March 27th, 2024." The requests for waiver concerning... The requests for waiver concern the following. Owner and application date: Old Rhinebeck Aerodrome, 412024, 16 Norton Road, Steven Lewick, April 2nd, 2024, 580 Bud's Corners Road, Red Hook Land Corp, LLC, by Bob Ross, April 4th, 2024, 5 Old Farm Road, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, April 5th, 2024, 3944 Route 9G, 25 Old Farm Road Development LLC, April 5th, 2024, 102 Benson Loop, Tradition Subdivision Lot 8, 98 Benson Loop Road, Tradition Subdivision Lot 9, approximately .616 acres parcel Benson Loop Road, Tradition Subdivision Lot 99, Benson Loop Road, Tradition Subdivision Lot 100, and Benson Loop Road, Tradition Subdivision Lot 101, and tax parcel, and approximately .165 acres parcel on Benson Loop Road, Tradition Subdivision Lot 102. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed waiver applications are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments to the Town Board. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the town clerk. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated April 9th, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red.
Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we open the concurrent public hearings. Is there a second?
Seconded.
It's closed.
Picking out.
Picking out, okay. All in favor? Giulio?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Okay, folks, they're concurrents, so whoever would like to come and speak on either your application, somebody else's application, your application, or hear on these waiver applications?
Well, I'll go first, nobody else at that.
Come on, Bob.
It's real simple. I put this application in, it's eight... We've been doing this for eight years. For the first five, we put in applications in on a regular basis. We feel we got well-ordered a little bit. The reason we feel that is because we have a good lady there that I think had a conflict at the venture school, Robert. I'm not sure, and I'm not here to get into all the mud. But it costs us quite a bit. We're looking to put one building up there now. When it's all built out, we're gonna look, have about five of them, maybe six, depending on where we end up with zoning board. But basically, we're looking to get one building in. We checked with the Health Department. They're fine with the sewer and all that. And then the plan is to look, because the sewer won't be sure until we get to put this thing in. I mean, it's real simple. I mean, to me, it's a cut-and-dry deal. There's nothing... There's nothing here, here. I mean, it's pretty simple. I mean...
Okay.
Unless you guys see something different, I'd like to address that if you have another issue other than what I have to say here.
No, I think we would just say we don't have all the information we need to render a decision on your application. We have a sheet of paper, which doesn't have...
You should have just about anything.
No, wait, we don't have anything that shows where your water comes in, where your septic is. But we don't have it. I don't know who you supplied it to.
So you need that, the sewer?
Yeah. I think our zoning guy, you know, discussed this with you yesterday.
No, I didn't get any yesterday. But the other side...
Yeah, we'll need... You'll need to give us, you know, all that information as part of your application. You have an application you're going to give to the planning board for this property. When you have all of the information that they're asking you for, just supply us a copy of that, and then we'll be able to, okay? So what we'll probably do with yours is just extend the public hearing until you have all that stuff, and this way we'll be ready when you're ready.
Okay.
Okay?
That's fair.
All right, okay. Sounds good. How are you? Steve, would you be kind enough to...
Steve Wood?
Yeah?
I applied for a building permit for my house in Bud's Corners Road, and I'm all ready to go, so I'm all within the guidelines. I'm 300 feet from the wetlands.
Okay.
Footings are ready to be pretty much poured, so I just wanted to get my permit and get going.
Good going. All right, well, we'll have some discussion about your application. But thank you very much for telling us. And good to see you. Okay, you're my new favorite person. You're trying to influence our decision, aren't you?
I am. I'm Tara Green. I'm here as the Director of Operations at the Old Rhinebeck Aerodrome. We have three projects that are on the table with the planning board at this time. Two of them are within 300 feet of a wetland, and so that is why we're put in with the moratorium. One of the projects is not at all part of that. And so overall, our hope is that we can phase our project and start with a project that's nowhere near the wetlands, which is the expansion of our museum building up in the back part of our parking lot. In the meantime, as we're looking into the moratorium waiver, but also to progress with what's going on with our project, we do have Mr. Fink working with our landscape engineer as far as filling out additional paperwork, getting DEC approval and whatnot for the two parts of the project that are related to or close enough to wetlands, where we do have to have all of that stuff on the table. You do have all of the pictures and drawings that are going with the three proposed projects, but for the public's sake, one is the expansion of the museum, one is a new entrance, new walkway, new covered bridge, improved ticket booth. This would improve accessibility for those with strollers, with wheelchairs, et cetera. And then the third proposal is for a large hangar that will replace two buildings on our property. As many of you know, the aerodrome's been there since 1958, and therefore so have some of the buildings, and therefore they need infrastructure upgrades, not only for the safety of people that go in and out of them, but for preserving the collection that we have that is so rare and unique. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tara. What I was referencing is, I saw Tara at an event last week. She knows, and you all know, that... She knows, and you all know, that I proudly have the old Reinbeck Aerodrome essentially all in the town of Red Hook, and we seem to get no acknowledgement for that, so she very nicely- The old Red Hook Aerodrome, it sounds so much nicer, don't you think?
Every time you call, it's on your phone.
Well, it'd be nice to make that a condition of approval, but I don't necessarily fly with the legal legal. Okay, would anybody else like to, to speak on the applications for the C, but you can speak on something else if you want, or something in the future. No, 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 go ahead.
Okay, Richard Rang, Special Companies, on behalf of Twenty-five Old Farm Road Development LLC, Tradition Aerodrome. As you're aware, we made an application for, there are six lots affected the three hundred foot buffer. We've explained in the application the magnitude of the expenses we've incurred for the project. The one thing I did want to bring up, and I'm not sure if this is the proper moment for it, is with respect to the resolution that was drafted for consideration. There was one line item in there, I suggested a minor change to the language, it would be in one B, where it says, I believe something to the effect of the, the home and other improvements not being closer to the existing wetlands than are currently shown. As you're aware, the homes that are built on each of these lots are selected by the home buyer, the purchaser, and so we don't really know exactly what home's gonna go on those lots. As Brandy and I'm sure Christine from her time on the planning board recall, we put homes on the plan just to show how everything would work, but they were not necessarily that home that was gonna be on those individual lots.
Could be a cottage.
So there, what's that?
It could be a cottage, it could be a-
Well, it could be a different configuration of the house, which may end up moving it back or forth a little bit on the lot. I suggested that you just strike the language about the home, and just leave it the improvements no closer to the wetland buffer than is necessary, and than is currently shown, and that would satisfy us with respect to being able to put a house on there that a home buyer wanted. Thank you.
Anyone else wanna, Dean? If you just-
I'll just make a comment.
Yeah, if you'd be kind enough to say your name.
I will.
I know it.
Okay, Dean Kent. I submitted for one-seventy-one fellow Newmark. My, my expectation was on there. Nobody asked me for any more information. The forms are filled out based on what was requested. This is for an existing home, and it's a two-car garage, dry space. Nothing's changing with bathrooms, or septics, or anything else. I'm not sure what else is needed. I checked with zoning, building inspector today. They requested nothing, so maybe it's a timing issue, I'm not sure what happened.
No, I'm sorry, he must not have communicated effectively with you, but what we need to see is, is essentially what you would have submitted for your building permit. You know, you have to do a little plot plan that shows where your activities are, your proposed activities, the location, for example, of where the septic is, where the water is, and the dis, and the distance from the wetland, because this is all about-
All right, that information's there. He got, he asked for a concept drawing of the garage and what he got, so-
Okay. Well, good news for you, we do have a resolution to call your public hearing, and if you have all that information ready for the next meeting,
Fine. How far out is the next meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay, thank you.
So you, you won't be off schedule.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Anyone else like to, yes, please do?
I'm Lauren Adernetto. I'm an attorney with Phillips-Idow. We represent New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, just colloquially referred to as AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T has submitted an application for a waiver from the moratorium. It impacts AT&amp;T's pending applications with the Z B A and the planning board for the development of a telecommunications facility at three-nine-four for Route nine G. We submitted a complete application for the moratorium waiver on April fifth, and a supplement the following week in response to comments from the board at the April ninth meeting. At this time, we would simply ask that, based on the written materials we've submitted to the board, that the moratorium waiver be granted for New Singular Wireless's application this evening to allow both the Z B A and the planning board to comply with S E C regulations that limit the amount of time that's available to issue those approvals for the facility in order to provide the town with much-needed wireless coverage that is certainly deficient in the area along Route nine G, as I'm sure everyone is very familiar with. If there's any questions on the application, I'm available to answer them, but it's a-
Thank you, Lauren. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, very good. So at this time, I'm going to recommend that we close the public hearing with respect to the four applications we deemed complete enough to render a decision. That would be the old Red Hook, I'm sorry, Reinbeck Aerodrome. Stephen Lewick, New Singular Wireless, Twenty-five Old Farm Road Development. And as part of that motion to extend the public hearing as it relates to Red Hook Land Corp. until our next meeting, and if you have all the materials there. And that is for May fourteenth, I believe, so we'll make that for seven-thirty-five. So that can join with a concurrent public hearing. I think we have two applications. We can pass Scalise and Kent that we can hold then, so we'll then have concurrent three application. So that's my motion. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Julia?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let's, let's go right into waivers and signs that since we've been talking about, and applications.
Do we have to pass the resolutions to schedule the other public hearings?
Oh, yes, thank you. No, I thought I sort of concluded that. Yeah.
Added them, so we're not wanting to do a new resolution.
I don't, I don't know who you talked about. I think we can combine that. Yeah, well, why don't, why don't we do that? We're extending the original plan, and then we can do these separately if it's just-
But these are just stat-
Why don't you add?
Because we have to publish the notice of the public hearing and the other-
Well, we can add it to the other notice for Kent and Scalise.
Yeah, so let's do that.
There's no need to, it's spread away.
Are you established by resolution these two, or concurrent with the others?
We're gonna do that, we're gonna do that now as twenty-five.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
And which one is that one? Scalise or Kent?
Yeah, we have Kent, so let's do Scalise at twenty-four. Resolution to the public hearing concurrent, seven-thirty-five, May fourteenth, I assume. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Resolution twenty-five, this is a resolution establishing a date for a public hearing regarding an application by Dean Kent for waiver under Local Law One of twenty twenty-four, placing moratorium on applications in TNDCC Subdistrict, on applications for subdivision in the AB District, and on applications affecting wetlands. So that's twenty-five, to make it also concurrent with Scalise in Red Hook Land Corp., I assume.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we've got that clear on our records. All right.
So are you voting for extension, or are you just closing the meeting with that extension and the extension for the all for Red Hook?
Yes, we're, we're holding over the public hearing until May fourteen.
Did you, did you vote on that, or is it just gonna be-
No, we, we did that, we did all-
And closing with the public hearing?
And we closed all-
No, I know, it's all in there combined.
We closed four, and we extended it.
It's just combined, that's what I wanted to know, thanks.
And the reason you clo, you extend is because you say you don't have all the paperwork.
Yeah, we don't have a complete application from the above.
Okay. Specifically, you don't know what's missing, do you?
I, I, I thought I articulated a couple of those things, you, you don't have-
It's a grayed-out area, because that was in the future, as far as the plot plan. The water coming in is where the village, we're negotiating with the village.
I understand that, Bob, but we have one sheet of paper, you don't even, we don't show where the septic is, you don't show whether you intend to try to use that septic, or whether, I mean, I think we've established through the county that you need to go and get a new septic now because of the demolished building, right? So you're gonna need to show where you intend to put that. So all of those details are, yeah, no, it's easy, great, but we'll, we'll need to see that as part of the application, that's all.
But you mentioned the water.
Well, you need to show where the central water's coming into the property, that's all. Just indicate on the, on the plus side. Okay, I think we've settled our public hearings. We've got the right. Okay, let's go to our first one, shall we? Don't look at the screen, you'll be good. Well, we're gonna start with unfortunately, our resolutions are not in the same order as the applications, so folks, may we go ahead and start with Lewick. So Steve, we, we, we had a determination from our zoning officer. I know you said that you don't think it's within three hundred feet of a D E C wetland, but looking at the approved plan, subdivision from back in two thousand and nine, it, according to our zoning officer, it's about a hundred and some odd feet away from it. The, the good news is it is over a hundred feet. Right now, that is the current regulations from D E C and Board of Health. Obviously, you'll, you know, be, be going to Board of Health again. We do have a resolution to consider here, authorizing the waiver for Stephen Lewick project from the provisions of Local Law One of twenty twenty-four, placing a moratorium. We received an application. This is an approved Board of Health lot. The subdivision was approved all the way back in two thousand and nine, and right now, it does conform to the regulations. The approval language here states that the town board may entertain approving the request subject to the following conditions, which is, you know, compliance with the conditions that were imposed by the planning board back at the time it was approved. And a location of all structures, including subsurface structures, no closer to the wetlands than is, is shown in, in the approval. The site-specific delineation, just once again, making sure that it is, you know, it does conform with the current code, and so any questions, folks, on, on this? If not-
Not a question, but I just think it's important to note that we have had our engineer review all of these applications, and so we do have, you know, recommendations for that, which goes along with what you just mentioned.
We do, and we have our engineer here, which has my questions.
And in this particular case, it's pointed out that the site was originally delineated by D E C in two thousand and nine, and so that boundary is good for ten years. So it's, so that's expired, so that's another reason why it has to be redelineated anyway, so.
So revalidation.
It is, it is renewed.
It is renewed, terrific.
Great, okay.
When? Last year by Ron Smith.
Okay. All right, well, the, the good news is our resolution approves the waiver application subject to, to those things, and so any other questions or comments, or not?
I mean, my only question is, and maybe this happened when you had it renewed, but it says that your house site is more than three hundred feet from any wetland. And I'm just curious, it's a big difference between what our zoning officer provided and your statement. I'm wondering how you arrived at that, that you were over three hundred feet.
With tape?
Looking on the ground, you, that was your observation.
From the D E C delineation, or from where you thought the wetlands were?
From, from the map to the house.
To the house, huh?
If you scale it on the map.
Okay, well, we do have you scale it on the map here. Again, you know, wetlands move, this is part of, you know, what D E C is trying to tackle, is to try to get site-specific and understand where the wetlands are and how best to protect them, and again, the reason for the moratorium on this aspect is to make sure that when they finalize their rules, which we expect any day, that our code does not conflict with what, what the new rules are relative to the law they passed back in twenty twenty-two. Needless to say, you know, we, we have from our zoning officer determination that it's within three hundred feet, so it is subject to a moratorium. And you have applied for a waiver, and we do have a resolution to grant you that waiver, so that's resolution number twenty-six. Any, any more comments, folks, on resolution number twenty-six? And we do have, as Christine mentioned, we have a memo from our engineer, Brandy Nelson, on all of these waiver applications, and there was no objection to approving the waiver, so.
Robert, could you think just a minute about the process for ensuring the compliance with these conditions? Is that between the applicant and the zoning officer, is there plenty more? How does that proceed?
Well, it depends on whichever condition it is that we make a part of the approval process. So for example, I think somebody mentioned Board of Health, was that you? So when you go to pull a permit, my understanding is for your septic, county health comes out and they, they take a look at that measurement to make sure that you are a hundred feet away. So that's the trigger process. But yes, it is up to, you know, landowners to fulfill their conditions, and that is a condition, you know, to have wetlands redelineated, or revalidated, I should say, or apply for an extension, which apparently is done. But yes, our building department will check each application to make sure it conforms, so not only these approval conditions, but any others that were a part of the original subdivision act of two thousand and nine. Okay, resolution number twenty-six. Where is this? Thank you, are all yours. Authorizing the waiver regarding Stephen Lewick project from the provisions. I think I mentioned the conditions, and we have received input from the town engineer, and we find that the project would be a proposed hardship. This has already been approved subdivision, already gone through Board of Health, and it's for an individual house, so I very happily-
Bless you.
We need a waiver from that. Very happily, Steve, of proposed resolution number twenty-six. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor or further discussion? All in favor? Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Phil Hamel?
Aye. Before you guys finish voting, I just wanna, for the one, two, three, four, five, whereas clause, I wanna make sure that you're voting with the ambition of April fourteenth- Ambition of, uh, April fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Add the date in there for the data publication.
Yes.
And to cross off the additional, just D N E.
Yes, the D N E is left blank, because we have no other condition. Uh, we have four votes there. Who didn't vote?
Hi.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, next up. The Red Hook aerodrome. The new, would it be the new Red Hook? At that point, it would be the new Red Hook. Okay, uh, let's get to it. Well, this is, this application, uh, uh, board members is a rather unusual one because. This may actually, uh. Be going in the right direction as opposed to, uh, having additional risk. Because if you're familiar, and I'm sure many of you are, with the, uh, property there off of Norton, there actually is a pathway that goes right through. Um, paved pathway right through the federal wetlands. And what they're proposing, which looks very attractive. Um, is to have a slightly elevated crossing over, over that water, so, um. This, this looks very nice, um, and certainly for, um, the, uh, protection of the wetlands, it certainly looks like it would be. An improvement over existing, uh, conditions. And as far as the, you know, museums and, um, other structures, um, as well. Here's, uh. The proximity for folks at home, this is now the existing asphalt walkway and the existing bridge. And this is, uh, almost adjacent to the proposed area, that's where it is. And ticket booth. Uh, we have a memo also from our engineer on this. Citing no, uh, no objection to the, um. Project being proposed for the aerodrome. I'm not sure. Appropriate order, okay. Uh, on behalf of the town, Diamond Bond Engineering has reviewed the request for the Ryan Beck aerodrome for the proposed walkway. Wetland restoration and ticket booths specifically seeking relief. From the moratorium on any application regarding development or alteration of property located within three hundred feet of D E C. Wetlands or in federal wetlands and locally protected wetlands. Um, the subject application is currently under review by the town planning board and has been, uh, for some time now for a site plan. Including a walkway and ticket booth. Wetland restoration and a new hangar as part of the review process. The applicant has submitted for the planning board's consideration, a site plan showing preliminary layout of improvements. The site has a tributary of the Salkell and Map data from the D E C Resource Mapper. Indicates federally regulated wetlands may be within project area, well, we know that to be, I mean, we, we, we walk over it one time. Uh, and, uh, D E C, uh, regulated wetlands are immediately south of the subject's site. Diamond Bond has prepared a comment letter to the applicant recommending their site plan application be supplemented with a site-specific delineation. So as to impacts, the wetland can be quantified and appropriate permitting. And mitigation member, uh, measures can be proposed. We have no objection to the town issuing the waiver. And I think I didn't put up the, uh, landscape, probably because that also would make people dizzy, but there's the landscape. Um, for the property, uh, as well.
And Robert, I think it's important to mention also that, um, as part of the application. Um, the aerodrome did include information that some of this project is being funded through a foundation grant that has a deadline.
Yes.
For the funds to be used, so that's in danger of losing that grant if they can't complete the construction within the time period.
Um, we have a resolution to entertain for that as well. I don't know why my images are all out of order. Okay, uh, number four on twenty seven.
Twenty seven.
Authorizing the waiver regarding Ryan Beck aerodrome project from the provisions of local law one of twenty twenty four. Placing a moratorium on applications in the T and D sub-district, applications affecting wetlands. Um, this is a waiver for, um. Purposes of an application pending before the planning board, site plan approval, replacement of a bridge. Covered walkway, a portion of which is to be located within federal wetlands. Um, also for the hangar, um, for the ticket, uh, booth, and so on and so forth. Um, the resolution, uh, establishing this public hearing at seven fifty-five. Um, notice the public hearing was advertised in the official paper on April twenty-fourth.
It's only advertised on April fourteenth.
Uh, the official is on April fourteenth.
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay. Um, the town engineer has reviewed the application. We, uh, approve the request for the waiver, uh, under the moratorium compliant, uh, subject to the following conditions. Compliance with any conditions imposed by the planning board in a secret, uh, negative declaration. And site plan regarding mitigation of potential wetland impact, uh, impacts. Compliance with A C O E federal wetlands permit applicable to the project with any conditions imposed by New York. Uh, New York State D E C, site-specific delineation by a qualified professional. The federal wetlands that are within the construction area, that's to be verified by the town engineer or flagged offense. Prior to the issuing of a building permit. Ten proposed construction areas depicted in the site plan to be staked out. In accordance with the detailed construction drawing submitted with the building permit and consistent with the approved site plan. Um, I have no other conditions to add for ten, any other? Anybody else?
So D is just.
D is to, is just the most. Um, that's twenty-seven, and, uh. Will there be enough money left over in the grant for the new sign?
Definitely.
All right, uh. I solemn second.
Bill got that one.
All in favor, Jacob Testa.
Hi.
Julia Solomon.
Hi.
Christine Kane.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck with everything. Um, let's move right on to our next. Application.
Singular, is it?
Singular, let's do singular. Okay. Okay, um, we did have a, a memo again from our engineer on, uh, request for relief. Um, they, they, they've reviewed as, I'm sure they did, as part of the planning board process, the application. Um, the request for waiver, um. Alteration of property located within three hundred feet of a D E C designated wetland. I think in this case, the application is for construction within the federal wetlands. Uh, limited in nature, it's just a driveway to get over, kind of like with the aerodrome, to get over to where they, um. Intend to install the cell tower. Um, the application, as I said before, is in front of the planning board for a site plan, has been for some time now, several months.
The application was submitted last May, two thousand twenty-three, so almost a year in front of the planning board.
Um. Uh, they've reviewed the records and find that no state-regulated wetlands are located on the subject's site. Wetlands that were delineated by the consultant, so these are already delineated, so they don't need to have an update to the delineation in this particular project, okay? Um. So, uh, confirmation, um, is something we, that, you know, we would want, at least this confirmation of the delineation. The site plan shows approximately five hundred seventy-five square feet of regulated wetlands will be, um, disturbed by the access driveway. Where a three-sided culvert, that would be a box culvert to facilitate, uh, both water and amphibians. Um, is proposed to span the wetland and underground utilities will be installed parallel to the access driveway. Um, with a thirty-foot wide easement, the current site plan shows no impact to the wetland area for the installation of the. Seventy-foot by seventy, seventy-foot by seventy-foot enclosure housing. The tower base and equipment pads, A T and T will lease a one-hundred-foot by one-hundred-foot portion of the subject's site. And it does include wetlands, so there's wetlands in the leased area, but wetlands not. Uh, as part of the construction activity within that one-hundred-feet, uh, square, okay? Um, and again, it will be confirmation of those wetlands and the leave flagging and all that, all right? Um, and they, uh, have no objection to the town issuing a waiver for A T and T to resume consideration of the planning board. Um, you know, the only thing I would ask is, did you look at alternatives that don't have any wetlands?
Yes, in fact, the site design has been developed carefully in coordination with the Army Corps over a several-year consultation process. This site is necessary to provide coverage, and so in order to limit any adverse impacts to the federal wetlands that are onsite. The, the project was designed to avoid them. And the only portion that couldn't be removed away from the wetlands onsite was a small portion of the access road in the box culvert. So we've mitigated any impacts to wetlands to the extent possible. And the flagging and staking will protect, uh, the limited disturbance that's required for the access road. And the Army Corps has issued an authorization for that limited disturbance.
Right.
Could you send that to the planning board, because I don't believe that's in our record yet?
The wetlands authorization?
Correct.
Is indeed in the record, but I'm happy to send in electronic.
If you wanna just email me which appendix in which segment there are many.
I'll send it to you as a single PDF with no other attachments.
Longer than ours. Um, you, you answered the question about this parcel, but did you look at alternative parcels within the amenity region?
Indeed, we did, as part of the planning board's extensive site plan special use permit and secret review. A T and T has submitted information that demonstrates it's examined, I think nineteen other alternative sites.
Okay.
Each, in each case, the other sites were ruled out because they simply don't provide the network coverage that A T and T needs to close up its gap. Or there are other issues like constructability, leasability issues, everything's ruled out. Um, a detailed alternatives analysis was submitted to the planning board, prepared by A T and T's site acquisition specialists. It is their specific job to evaluate all potential alternative sites in the area. And in this case, after a very long examination of potential alternatives, this was the best and only candidate that was available to develop the project.
Okay. Well, some of those other issues aren't really our purview, we're, we're just here about the wetlands, and so. I have to ask the question, if you looked at properties that don't have wetlands on them to put us on top of. Uh, any, uh, questions, folks, uh, before we go ahead and entertain resolution number twenty three?
The only thing I would say is, you have matters before the zoning board of appeals, correct?
Indeed, there are two applications in front of the zoning board of appeals for a use variance to allow the facility as an additional principal use. On the site in addition to the existing commercial office.
Well, we're just talking about wetlands here tonight, so unless it's not.
To forward a copy of your letter to the chair, so they know that this has been taken up.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we have, uh, resolution number twenty-eight. It's a resolution. Um, regarding a new singular P C S L L C project. Uh, whereas local law one of twenty twenty-four entitled, uh, you know, the law pursuant to section eight. The town board is authorized to grant a hardship waiver. Um, the application was received on April fifth from New Singular. We have a typo there, wireless, regarding an approximately hundred-foot by hundred-foot leased portion of a six-point-eight-acre parcel. At Route nine G. Um, a resolution was duly adopted by the town board, setting this public hearing. It was advertised in the paper record on the fourteenth. The zoning, uh, officer has determined that the proposed facility would be subject to this moratorium law. Uh, the town planning board has adopted a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And for the folks at home not familiar with this terminology, negative means that it won't have a negative, uh, impact. Um, a telecommunications tower not exceeding a hundred feet in height would be a permitted use in our D C zone. Um, after reviewing the application, the project end comments received, consultation with the town engineer. And after due deliberation, and the town board finds the application of a moratorium law. To the project would constitute an unjust result and cause the applicant substantial economic hardship. If the waiver is not granted, the proposed use of the property will not harm the public health, safety, and welfare. And I think some people would disagree with that, you know, with cell towers, but, uh, the proposed use of the property is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the town of Red Hook. And compatible with existing land use in the immediate vicinity of the property. Not sure, I'm loving that language. Um, okay, uh, now therefore be resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook as follows. The town board hereby approves the request for waiver under the moratorium law for the new singular project, subject to the following conditions. Compliance with conditions imposed by the secret negative declaration and the site plan regarding mitigation of potential wetland impacts of the project. Compliance with the A C O E federal wetlands permit applicable to the project and the site-specific delineation by a qualified professional. The federal wetlands that are within the construction area is to be verified. There's some repetition in this, we need to make this correction, ask if, would you please look at this resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Are within the construction area is to be verified, to be verified.
Yeah, is to be verified.
One time.
The town engineer and.
Twice verified is good.
Yep.
Uh, by the town engineer and flagged offense prior to issuing of the building permit. And the proposed box culvert and driveway construction areas depicted in the site plan are to be staked out. In accordance with the detailed construction drawings, uh, submitted with the building permit application, consistent with the approved site plan. Um, before we take up twenty-eight, um, my question is, and I'm sorry, Brandy, I, I could look at the site plan now. Um, the size of the box culvert you're proposing for this wetland?
I don't have the plans in front of me, I don't recall, do you have the plans with you?
I, I don't.
You have the plans with you.
George has the plans with you.
Somebody's got it. Well, I, I wanna know how it relates to, um, the wetlands. I mean, we are in the process and have expended quite a bit of funds trying to help the people in the community that this tower is right next to. Deal with flooding issues that they've had because of improper infrastructure that was approved by planning boards years ago. Being that the advice they were getting was the correct advice. I think that the advice they were getting was the correct advice, that they were not building and sizing for the future. So, you know, if we go ahead and entertain this waiver, I think we want to know that at least the size of this box culvert is not going to be insufficient.
Do you want me to respond based on what I know currently?
Please.
So currently, the applicant has, has submitted a, call it a feasibility level plan, and they show their intention to install a box culvert with dimensions that span the breadth of that portion of the wetland through the width, the entire width of the driveway. We have requested hydraulic analysis associated with the culvert design. And Lauren, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe AT&amp;T's position is they'll be submitting that with their construction level drawings at the time they go to pull their building permit from the town. And so the communication that Time Bond has had with the planning board as it relates to this application is that that just be codified as a condition of the site plan approval, that the, that the details of the design be submitted to satisfaction of the town engineer so that we can verify the hydraulic capacity of that culvert.
We have the utmost confidence in our telecommunication, telecommunications companies and certainly our town engineer. But I will say decades ago, there was a board up here that had confidence in those engineers that were working for the town, and they undersized everything, and we are left trying to figure out what the heck to do with all this stormwater infrastructure and, you know, where to find the money for it. So I would just ask you all, you know, Brandy, you're working for the planning board on this project. Please don't undersize this because I think we're going to regret passing this waiver if, if we find out you sized it for what the wetland is currently, you know, showing on the ground. Any more comments on this application? Resolution number twenty-eight, I read it all, and I will move it. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, with no further discussion, all the favor, Julia Solomon.
Hi.
Jacob Tetha.
Hi.
Bill Hammond.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are at tradition. Everything is old tonight. It'll be old, Brian, back. We have tradition, anybody got anything new, old farm row. There's a lot new happening. Okay, tradition, I think I've heard of this. You are applying for those parcels that were deemed to be within the proximity, so therefore subject to the moratorium, our zoning office occurs. The project is a permitted use in the zoning. They're served, and I think important distinction for, for this application and also note for the record, please Deanna for the aerodrome and also for the AT&amp;T Singular. Part of the considerations is the potential impacts on the wetlands. There are no, obviously, septics associated with the cell tower, there are no septics associated with the bridge crossing for the aerodrome. And in this case of tradition, there are no individual septics because they have a community septic that is located away from the lots that are seeking the waiver. We have a memo on this as well. Time Bond has reviewed the request. The property, the lots are Inc. nine ninety-nine, a hundred, a hundred and one, and a hundred and two. It's a construction project underway since two thousand eighteen, in fact, something that took many years to obtain approvals, the tradition development, because it was conforming to new zoning, specifically designed for this type of project. And so therefore the considerable investment, not only in seeking approvals, but now they're well underway, two-thirds of the property is developed out, and the infrastructure is in place, and the community septic is up and running and approved. So it's been underway since two thousand eighteen, so we're now six years into it. It includes a DEC regulated wetland KE three, which was delineated and by consultants and validated by the DEC. The boundary was certified. Certification includes a note, again, about the delineation, and it should be revalidated. Site plan to avoid impacts of site development on the wetland. Again, we discussed how the community septic is off to the side. The lots are shown, we had that lot planned, we know where the lots are, and the placement of the wetlands versus those eight lots. Subject to the revalidation, no problems with granting the waiver. There was a request, Richard, I mean, I don't, I don't particularly have a problem with the change in that language on the proposed resolution. Just know that an improvement is an improvement.
Brandy, you touched on that.
Sure.
So the, in your memo, there's the, at the, kind of the, three-third paragraph. It sounds as though the existing permit issued by the DEC for impact on the hundred-foot regulated adjacent area is limited to mowing the walking path and putting the picking cables. So therefore, no improvements beyond that would be allowed within the hundred-foot regulated area. Is that correct?
Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they don't have a permit for any disturbance. Yeah, no permit was required.
Okay, yeah.
It was considered a minimis that walking.
Right, we confirmed during the approval process with the DEC that mowing that path was not considered a formidable impact. But to your question specifically, other things would be an improvement than would require.
So even if there was, yeah, there's no latitude given for the exact configuration of the house on the lot, it could not impede into that hundred-foot regulated area without it.
Yes, and I sent the board an amended letter, but I don't know if you received the attachments that I referred to because I did not reattach the, the drawings to it. But the way the lots were configured, they were configured based on the extent of the adjacent area, and then there was a small additional buffer, and then the lots started. So the lots themselves were laid out to avoid any impacts to that hundred-foot adjacent area.
Okay, so resolution number twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
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 Dated April twenty-fourth, authorizing waiver for twenty-five Old Farm Row Development LLC project. The parcels are enumerated here in the resolution. There are one, two, three, four, five, six. Six, six, lots detailed here. And we conducted a public hearing, it was published on the fourteenth of April in the paper of record. The property is being served by a community septic system, a public water supply. The community septic is being maintained and operated by Dutchess County Water and Wastewater and constructed pursuant to current Dutchess County Department of Health requirements and the conditions of the planning board subdivision, site plan approval for the project. It's clear the applicant has, would have substantial economic hardship if the waiver was not granted. The project is two-thirds filled out at this point. The proposed use of the property will not harm the public health, safety, and welfare. The proposed use of the property is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the town of Red Hook and compatible with existing land use in the immediate vicinity. There are conditions to the approval, as there are with all of these waiver applications. The town board entertains to approve this waiver, subject to compliance with conditions imposed by the planning board's negative declaration, subdivision plan, and subdivision flat. Regarding mitigation of potential impacts of the project on the adjacent wetlands and the location of all, if you want homes and, I guess that's homes and other removed, that's fine, but all, I mean, a home is an improvement.
Yeah, I'm just, and the point I was trying to make is the grading on each of the lots, and as Brandy pointed out, the lot does not encroach onto the hundred-foot adjacent area specifically, kind as such, and there's a tidal swell, and they're located between the lot and the, and the actual hundred-foot adjacent area, which is stop, run, up, going into the, to the adjacent area. But all those improvements occur right up to the hundred-foot adjacent area. So that's what I wanted to make clear of, because the, the home configuration is likely to change depending upon the home selected by a home buyer. So by specifically calling out the home, footprint not changing, creates an issue for us with respect to the, to the.
I see what you're saying, okay. Makes sense, okay. Modifying one B, location of all improvements, no plus to the adjacent wetlands than is shown in the approved subdivision flat. Site-specific delineation by a qualified professional, wetlands identified on the flat is to be verified by the town engineer, and the proposed construction areas depicted in the site plan are to be staked in accordance with detailed construction drawings submitted with the building permit application and consistent with the approved site plan. I mean, I don't have an additional condition.
Delete D.
Yep.
Site, let's see, subdivision plan and subdivision. Yeah. I think we can delete D unless anyone has an additional condition. I'll move resolution twenty-nine.
Second.
Oh, she's had a lot given, I mean.
That's quite nice, okay. That was Christine, sorry. Julia.
Hi.
William.
Hi.
Jacob.
Hi.
This is why, please, it is. Okay, I think we have done all our work. The waiver has been granted. We're stuck with you for a few more minutes of that, right? So, but one of the other things we need to do is to entertain, as they've been completing the different phases of the project, they have, for the folks at home, developers don't just come in and go ahead and say, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. We actually hold performance bonds. It doesn't relate to how well they perform, it relates to whether or not they will conduct the necessary work so that our community doesn't get stuck with an unfinished project or a base of a project where we then have to jump in with taxpayer funds and fulfill. So they have to put up a performance bond, and as they complete the work, then we entertain requests to convert them to maintenance. And so that's what we have here for what is phase six. And, don't look at the screen, you'll get dizzy, I know. In this case, are we, let's see, here we go. We'll get there, we'll get there. There we go. Okay, we have a memo from our engineer. It's a request for bond reduction. I think I inadvertently say for maintenance, right? We're, we're still keeping it with the performance, but, right?
The road group of bond assets, just performance bond.
Yeah, it's for the roads.
We can spot for the water wastewater, but that wasn't included here, but we can discuss that.
Right, and so we had our engineer review the request and to recommend a dollar amount to reduce. The recommended value is slightly different, a hundred and eighty-three thousand versus a hundred and eighty. And so I think at this time, we can entertain that amount. Good faith. We do have a, I believe we have, here's the calculations there. Obviously, pricing changes, but, you know, these estimates are exactly that. All right, this would be resolution thirty. Approving performance bond reduction for tradition and Red Hook, section six. I think we've already approved going forward with section eight, that's the last section. As a condition of resolution fourteen of twenty-two, adopted back in March of twenty-two, the developer of tradition, a hundred and two lots, subdivision project to be developed in sections, delivered to the town per the performance bond in the amount of four hundred and thirty-one thousand. Eight oh seven regarding section six of the project, whereas pursuant to resolution sixteen, adopting, the town authorized the, the bond, a reduction to three hundred and ten at that time. Completed work now has us entertaining a reduction to a hundred and eighty-three, one thirty-one, and I so move resolution number thirty. Who would like to second this?
Second.
All right, all of Barbara. Jacob.
William.
Christine, okay.
Hi.
That's thirty. Thank you, gentlemen. Good seeing you. We have to work. All right, we are. The reason we don't have enough housing in our community is because we make the housing committee wait till after nine o'clock to do their presentation. Fortunately, through the miracles of YouTube and PandaTV twenty-three dot org, people could see this at any hour of the day. Also require.
This is early for the housing committee meetings, I know.
This is, is that all right? It's still housing, but probably, is that what it is? Hang on. We are, no, we are not making them wait. No, we, we don't have, we don't want to have a housing uprising for anything, you know. Okay, very good. Well, sorry, thank you. Thank you for all your good work.
Well, I'm just glad we have a captive audience here.
We do, you do, you do have, very good.
I think I disobeyed, and I, I looked at the screen, and I feel a little dizzy, but I'm happy to be here to present an update from the housing committee. I'm here with Trish dancing and Adrian.
Who just ran out to get her.
Adrian was here, she's done, I think, she had it, it's a minute too late.
That's, well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks for having us.
We'll see you soon.
Thank you for having us.
Why don't we, why don't we all kidding aside, oh, yeah, there we go.
So I was here a year ago, we were here a year ago to, we had just formed, and we talked about sort of our first few months together, some of the first speakers. and we talked about sort of our first few months together, uh, some of the first speakers that we had, we had relied, we made the case for low and middle income housing in our community, relying a lot on the housing needs assessment, um, and we also, we had a speaker, who came, uh, works a lot with committees like ours, told us, encouraged us sort of at the outset to think broadly about housing issues, to not determine solutions before we've heard from the community and engaged with them. Suppose education and advocacy are key, um, and then we also said we intended to look at zoning, I think we had along with some things that we wanted to do, and so most of these things are what we've been up to for the past year. But a year later, I think it's worth noting, I think you can, you can just say, right?
Right there.
Right there is fine, yeah, we'll move to the survey in a moment, but there's no slide for, I'm just sort of opening remarks.
Can you page turn or?
I'll be turning pages, but you don't have to turn yours. So, yeah, so it's a year later, I, I think that what some people call attainable housing, the needle hasn't moved a lot in our community, but we know that we've learned a lot about it in the past year, I'm sure that you all have as well. You know, if anything, I think maybe some rents and homeownership is even further out of reach for a lot of folks, because prices have continued to rise, and in particular rents have continued to rise, um, in our community and in our region. And also, I, I wanted to point out that independently, the board has made some significant strides with the purchase of the Cooking Ham property, and, and it's a novel project that captures a lot of what this community is about, the preservation of open space and farming, and then also reserving some lands for affordable housing, so, um, we observed that, and, uh, when it comes down to, I think, further along in the process, we'd also like to be of use, that we can also be a sounding board for some of the things that come up with the community. So, to delve, just for a moment into the, internally into the committee, I feel like I have to say, um, a little bit about what's happened in our last year, so about midway through our total time together, it's been about seventeen, eighteen months, we were down to less than half of our committee, so our original nine volunteers, we still had attendance from Jacob and Julia as liaisons, um, but we, our numbers really dwindled. It was for all the types of reasons that I think volunteer committees struggle with, someone moved out of state, two people had severe health issues, um, and then a number of people sort of had a combination feedback of, they're really busy and they don't have enough time to dedicate to this, but also, we definitely sensed the frustration with working on a very broad issue, it's very difficult to move, something that they're struggling with throughout our state and our country. And it's, it can be very slow work, there's a lot going on, just the pace of articles in the day of the Freeman, the day of the catch, and beyond are, it's daily, so, um, anyway, it's been a lot, but we, we have us three still here, we have a very dedicated volunteer who's been working with us for a number of months, who couldn't be here tonight, David Sopol.
His husband's here.
And his husband's here? Yeah, nice to meet you.
They're, they're here.
Thanks for coming.
Of course.
And so, uh, I, I just think it's worth pointing out that, you know, as volunteers, most of us with full-time jobs, and I know this is not, it's unique to our committee, this is what all volunteer committees are, um, it's been difficult for us to maintain, because we also look to refilling our numbers, and that takes some of our time. So, that's part of our update. Also, I think staying the rest of what Chatham and Kingston, Rhinebeck, Woodstock, and a lot of other communities, and hearing from some speakers, um, we're excited to see other communities that are moving through a comprehensive plan update, and feel like a lot of the stuff that was on kind of our bucket list of things that we wanted to look at for housing is most appropriately funneled through that. But that being said, it's also, that's a long-term process, and so we have, later on the presentation, I wanna point out a couple of things that we feel like don't necessarily need to wait to, to take some kind of action on. And so, you know, we'll move to the survey, and Adrian, describe it.
Great, do I need to go up here?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, uh, my name is Adrian Treska, I'm one of the volunteer members of the housing committee, um, and Trish and I are gonna present a couple of things about our survey. So, we made a survey, you might have seen it around town or online, um, we, it was live between February and April, it was online, and we also put hard, like, online websites for the town and the village, um, as well as the village of Tivoli, we put hard copies in various community centers, libraries, et cetera, uh, and we did it in English and Spanish. We had a hundred and eighty-five respondents, a wide range of respondents, and, um, our committee found that everyone who responded had a very balanced and very thoughtful and frequently hyper-local and invested insights. We sort of, we decided to prioritize that the, um, survey was user-friendly, fairly simple, and didn't alienate people, in the hopes that that would get greater feedback.
It should probably come as no surprise that we need more housing in Red Hook, seventy-eight, seventy-six point eight percent of respondents felt that that is in fact the case, it, it was made abundantly clear. But it should be noted that it, our respondents also made it clear that they understand the challenge that is unique to our town of balancing our love for open space with the need for additional housing. They also showed, uh, knowledge and awareness that infrastructure is needed whenever additional housing is created.
And just a couple of quotes, because we got a lot of information anecdotal, anecdotally as well as in terms of data, uh, one was that, these need to come down, um, there was an abundance of existing recreational, agricultural, and open space, along with a shortage of housing and commercial development, and another respondent offered perhaps more challenging, the town of Red Hook is too passive and focused on preservation and not on planning for housing and the modern age we live in.
So, what is affordable housing here in Red Hook?
One more, so, still, one more here.
Okay. HUD defines affordable housing as being thirty percent of one's income devoted to housing, that being rent or mortgage, as well as utilities. So, here in Red Hook.
Inclusive of utilities.
Utilities.
Inclusive of.
Inclusive of utilities, correct. So, um, thirty percent of an individual's median income here in Red Hook would be a monthly rent of about twelve hundred dollars, um, or mortgage, thirty percent of the median household income would be a payment monthly of less than twenty-five hundred dollars. I don't know about you, I wish my mortgage was less than twenty-five hundred dollars a month.
And a quote that we thought helped illustrate some of the responses goes as follows, it is to the town's benefit to have affordable housing, to allow young people to stay in their community, and lower wage and farm workers to live where they work, providing what we, an important reminder that affordable farmworker housing is necessary to preserve rural character genuinely, and that even the term rural character is not self-evident.
All right, so you can go to the next one, I just wanted to point out, so I did some analysis, like Adrian said, we didn't ask for tons of demographics, because we wanted people to get through our survey, but we had a few things, we did ask if people own or rent, we asked about age, um, so then you can sort of cross-sort how people responded to things, and we'll have more of a report laying this stuff out, but I just wanted to mention, you know, there are some significant differences between how renters and owners responded to some of the questions, so, um, the renters are in red, uh, owners are in blue, the top two bars are, housing is not affordable for me, and I know others who struggle to rent or buy, so renters are more than twice as likely to say that, uh, they're having difficulty with affordability, um, the second two are, housing is affordable for me, but I know people who struggle to rent or buy, somewhat different response, I don't know, you know, into exactly what that means about renters and owners, and then, you know, the smallest response really was that housing is affordable for me, and I believe it is for others, which is like only a few people who took our survey, of a hundred and eighty-five said that, we can go into the next one. But there's also a, a lot of agreement across those boundaries and also across age groups, but this is just an example of agreement, almost the same proportion of people who took our survey said that more housing should be created, and then another thing I'd point out is that there was a fairly significant, I think it's twenty-some people said that they're not sure, and so as a committee, we sort of took that as, you know, one of our roles is, is education and advocacy, and convening folks to learn more about housing, and we feel like, uh, across a lot of our responses, there was a lot of sort of neither or I'm not so sure, and so we see that there's an opportunity there. Go to the next one.
So, for the purposes of this evening, uh, we wanted to focus on this in terms of housing stock, so in this survey, um, people were given, given options to choose from and rank in a, um, and this is how they were selected and ranked, um, that we were in most need of multifamily housing, ADUs, single-family homes, senior housing, and mobile home communities.
Yeah.
We can scroll to the next. To the next one, and as you can see, what is holding us back, again, not surprisingly, the top answers were availability and cost, um, but just under that, uh, they, people listed rules, and there was significant, uh, feedback anecdotally, especially in the rules department.
Some of the, and not all of the colorful descriptions of Red Hook's zoning laws and regulations were words like labyrinthine, stubborn, and outdated, so rules have a significant effect on people.
And I think we can go to the next one now. On the question of who should address housing issues overwhelmingly, um, you can see a little over ninety percent, respondents, uh, believed that the town and village and local government should take a lead in solving this problem, um, that was followed by, uh, the private sector, nonprofits, and large local employers, with answers indicating that they felt the local government should work in partnership or tandem with those entities, um, and we were, it was, uh, encouraging to have, to see that come back, um, and it would be remiss if we didn't mention how much of the feedback also expressed a desire for timely engagement and transparency in much greater amounts before decisions around these things are made for the community and from the board.
And then, and also the previous ones, if, if anyone's reading percentages and wondering, why don't they add to a hundred, those are multiple choice, and these are people picking multiple things, I don't know if that came through, seems like there's always someone who's like, hey, that doesn't make sense, so that clears that up. So, there's another question where we actually, folks ranked different types of land use, and what you can see is sort of the bookends there, uh, housing was by far most often the first choice, and commercial development, which was a little bit of a surprise, and we had a quote earlier about somebody saying there should be more commercial development, but that was really the minority, and it was most typical as a last priority of the four, um, and this is also interesting to sort in different ways across age, um, there's definitely differences in how different age groups think about agriculture and open space as a priority, uh, but it is most typically the second one, and recreation and trails could be that there's some confusion about those two categories or what the overlap is, but it was most typically a third choice. We can go to the next one. And there's lots of quotes there, but I feel like we're short on time, and so we can move along, um, so, what's that?
Well, see, it takes you time.
Oh, thank you.
I was running the meetings now.
Okay. So, if we could just go back to the top, but.
Turn it all again.
Do over. So, and this is something that David helped us out a lot with, but, so there's a number of different solutions that we've looked into, and I think something that we found as we looked through them is, you know, what are things that go into the comp plan process? What are things that are beyond our committee's real capacity, as, especially as our numbers are getting less and less, you know, how do we focus our work? And because, you know, the best advice, best practices say, you should be looking at a menu of, of things, and balancing all of them, and trying to figure out how to move forward at the same time with a, a number of different things, we felt like we wanted to look a little bit deeper at something that we felt like not only is supported in the survey, but it's also something that a lot of other communities in our region and across the country are doing, um, that sort of cuts across a lot of categories. So, we looked at accessible dwelling units, or ADUs, um, they are addressed in the village and town code, and I'll get to barriers in a moment, but, um, some of the reasons why multi-generational caregiver living can be in these, um, we definitely heard in our responses and other engagement with folks, that people feel like they don't have options to sell their house and move to a smaller house, because the market is really constrained, but some folks have enough money, although it's getting more and more expensive to build just about anything, um, to, to build an ADU, um, those are some different configurations. It's also can increase property value, you can get some rental income, um, you can, if it's seven in the village in particular, you can be closer to a lot of job opportunities and other things in this sort of more densely populated area, but this is something you can also do in the outskirts. There's New York State opportunities for capital assistance to build ADUs, so there's some mission-driven programs from the governor, where you'll, you'll get some capital assistance as long as you can ensure it's affordable for, I think it's ten years, and that's a new program, we expect to see that, uh, and programs like it to expand, because you do need some assistance in doing this. And then, you know, there, there's a model building codes, there's a lot of, the blueprint for how to make it easier and to clear the path for ADUs is not something we need to reinvent, this is stuff, over in Ulster County, the Housing Smart Initiative, they have basically, across a lot of other categories, but for ADUs in particular, they have, this is what your model building code could look like, you can adapt it, um, of course, everyone's concerned about short-term rentals, of course, every community has different concerns about setbacks and how to deal with these things, but they do recommend that you eliminate special approvals, but there are a number of things that can be done to make it easier. If you look up ADUs in either the town or the villages code, you will find them, you'll find accessory apartments, cottages, things like this just make it just a little bit harder for people to figure out, um, how to do it, and there's a lot more that can be done there also. So this is something that we think doesn't necessarily have to wait for a comp plan to make some movement, or at least to start convening folks to share their experience. We, we did hear from, uh, someone from the planning board, who's also a developer, and got some of that insight there, but I think there's more that we could hear and sort of get a sense of what are the barriers that people are actually experiencing here around ADUs. And then there's lots of other reasons why they're good, but I don't wanna be all of them. Let's look at the barriers for a moment, um, so I mentioned some of these, but design constraints, the overall size, setbacks, number of units, off-street parking is always an issue, um, there you are, yep, that's fine. Owner occupancy is sometimes a requirement, and it really varies in the villages and in the town, what these requirements are, as I said, as of right versus conditional use. And then some barriers beyond regulation, and these are just challenges, are that it's, it's around five hundred, six hundred dollars per square foot to build things, so it says, I believe it's six hundred and fifty square feet is the size of an ADU in our town, so you can do the math, that's a really expensive little apartment, so that's a challenge, that's something, you know, I said there's some capital assistance, but we acknowledge that there are a lot of challenges, um, lack of access to lending products, um, navigating design constraints, permitting process, landlord, I've talked about that, um, infrastructure capacity is something that even on the small, you know, you think multifamily, I know there are a lot of, uh, issues around creating twenty or forty housing units, um, but there's still issues trying to create something smaller in your yard. And then there's also differing perspectives in neighborhoods about incremental growth, and that's something, again, that as a housing committee, I think we're sort of crystallizing on, we feel like we can help with that, not necessarily to advocate for something in particular, but just to hear what people have to say, and maybe get people to establish kind of the same set of facts about this.
Before you go on too much for the B, the five to six hundred dollars per square foot, does that include septic?
Yes, yeah, that's, so the, like, the total development cost that, and this is, you know, it does vary, it depends on who's doing the work, but if, if you go into the market and you're asking someone to build you. But if you go into the market and you're asking someone to build you and include your septic and other utilities, it can cost as much.
You're right around that. But the problem is you go back just 10 years, eight years, it was 200, 250.
Yes.
It has exploded.
It's astronomically.
So every time we hold somebody up in planning, there's a huge cost associated with that. And I think a lot of people never see that. It is bad.
And that's, that's something we're hearing tonight.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons we all believe.
And it's also important that people are prepared when they come to the planning board. Because it's not always planning work that causes the delays.
Well, and also I would say, I mean, that's another kind of, the role of this committee, I feel like, is about, you know, there are fingers, people have personal experiences with why some of these things don't work. But there's also a way, I think, to acknowledge what the challenges are and help people be more prepared. If we want to see more ADUs, we help people become more prepared to go to the planning board. Or maybe we make it so they don't have to go to the planning board and have people wrestle with these issues in some circumstances maybe. And that's what a model building code is about. Yeah, so the next slide, and this is our last slide, so I'll have some closing remarks. I'm not going to go through all of these. I already talked about ADU regulatory changes, but there are a number of things and different terms that we've looked at. I feel like where we've landed is that we can't give you this dynamite report that I've thought about where I'm like, these are potential parcels. And a lot of the technical analysis, which is actually what I'm trained in, I found that we've spent a lot of our time trying to work through other issues related to this and just to discuss and become informed about some of these best practices. But we do have a number of them that we've looked into. I mean, I know that mobile home park preservation was brought up by Bill at our last meeting. We've looked at this a little bit. Community land trusts, I've actually spent a lot of time working with a community land trust professionally now, in the time since. And, you know, there is a lot of potential there. But I think it's hard to just look at one or two different solutions without sort of determining what the priorities are with the community. And so, as I said, I think the comp plan is one way of sorting some of these things out. And then again, in the near term, there are other things that can be done and we'd like to help especially with those. And so in closing, you know, fair and equitable housing, it doesn't just happen. I heard a speaker say at a recent ribbon cutting in Highland, that housing, fair and equitable housing happens town by town. And I think that's really true. And so I think it's something that we can accomplish, but it's going to be specific to our town. It's notoriously difficult to affect change on housing. And I think I have maybe too many notes now I'm realizing about that. And the housing's tough, it's really tough and you guys all know that. But it's just something that I feel like we need to acknowledge and get kind of ahead of as we move forward. We're 17 months in and I feel like we have a long ways to go. We had a member from the Woodstock Housing Committee, he was a co-chair, and he talked about how it took them, I think they had 10 years to get their smaller rep code development of about 40 units done. It took about seven years for them to move to the place where they are towards the comprehensive plan. Several more years after that to get the housing oversight task force put together to get the zoning code to reflect that. So these things take a really long time. Maybe there are opportunities for us to make it a little faster. And then also just acknowledging that a lot of this stuff is going to take a lot of time. And then one final thing is we're, we need volunteers, we need more folks to come back. And so we're looking to rebuild. And I think we're going to focus in the next few months while continuing our work, we're going to focus on having speakers, having a reason to come to our meeting if you're not familiar with us. And so that folks can, can sort of become, you know, I think start to relate to other people's experiences, hear more, get interested, and then hopefully come join us and work with us so that we can do more.
Go ahead.
Thank you, yeah.
Just a quick question. Can you, I mean, home sharing programs is kind of a wide, I've read different things.
Sure, yeah.
Do you have some examples in mind?
So Woodstock has one, I think in partnership with the family of Woodstock, which is a social service provider in Ulster County. They, their housing committee focused on this where there were some folks who had excess capacity in their household. They didn't want to, they weren't the type to do Airbnb out of their house. But they were willing to have somebody else facilitate some kind of a process to get maybe a Bard student-type person, somebody that met with their expectations and had passed kind of a sort of screening of some sort to come share the space and rent out of their homes. And that's what home sharing, there's that and there's everything up to, there are some websites and apps more than on like the Airbnb side. But with a mission-driven sort of program to get people to be able to have the process of doing all that screening and vetting, but to get people to stay in their homes. It's more about long-term than it is about, as Airbnb is, the short-term.
And Bill, one of the interesting things we batted around in committee was an intergenerational approach to home sharing. You know, there are a lot of elderly who are living in big houses, who can't afford to sell them because they can't afford to buy. If they can find a way to open their home, to get the support that they need, right, it could all, it could be a mutually beneficial arrangement.
Yeah, the problem we really have too, a lot of older people, their taxes are so high that they're taxed right out of their, that's, that's an issue.
We got that as comments, yes.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, it's, it's a tough issue.
You know it.
But I don't think a lot of government.
Thank you. Really appreciate all your work. You mentioned, you know, how we have to move in a timely fashion. You know, we are, at least with the ability that we have, I think you've seen that we'll seize an opportunity. Sometimes that opportunity comes like that and we have to take it and do the best we can on sort of short notice and come up with a public purpose and a plan and project, and we're doing it quickly. Infrastructure, you mentioned infrastructure. As soon as the sewer went in in the village, we decided we had to expand that. And we have to work to do that so that we can create opportunity for everyone, residential, commercial, property owners.
Can I say one, one thing there is, I think also when you're making capacity plans for the community, affordable housing is not some, the market doesn't support it, right? It's not something that leads, there are other opportunities that come in front of it. And so I think it's important also to consider the town's role in allocating. As, as you've done with the Cookingham land, sometimes it takes stepping in and allocating some of a resource to go to it. And I think it's important, thinking about other resources that way too, beyond water and sewer.
Sure, well, certainly for the acquisition itself, we've modified our incentive zoning. You did reference about encouraging development. I mean, I think we're a unique community in that we have an incentive zoning fund where developers can come in and get bonus density. You see the tradition for a project. You know, just in context, I would just offer that, you know, if you look at, and I'll send you the chart, maybe I didn't, you know, a couple of years ago. But if you look at the number of homes and even accessory structures that have created, been created over the last decade, it's a dramatic increase from the previous 20 years. In fact, it's, it's as big as it's been ever since the 60s when IBM moved into the area. So we are having some success. Of course, in Red Hook, we can only do our part and then some. We can't change the housing crisis for, you know, for the whole Hudson Valley. The other, the other thing I would say is we will do everything we can or try to with your assistance and expertise that we can. But there are certain things out of our control and, you know, the Federal Reserve, you know, you didn't mention it at all, but, you know.
There's a lot we did not mention.
Right. But that's, but that's the elephant in the room that, you know, right now, to finance any project, whether it's a single-family home or accessory dwelling, if it requires debt, you know, it's, it's, the payment is twice as high as it was just three or four years ago, not even factoring in the increase in pricing. So I'm pretty confident we can't do anything about what are the, when the Federal Reserve finally decides to lower interest rates. But, but I'm sure Trish will tell you that she can't wait as a real estate professional for them to finally do it. So it gets to be a little bit more of a gradual, and this is what happens in the real estate sector, is it goes very boom bust when, you know, it really needs to be something in moderation. As far as accessory structures, we do allow, right, Brandy? I mean, we have had projects where people have had accessory structures in excess of 650 square feet.
With special permission and your neighbors can come tell you how much they hate that plan. And I think those are the sorts of things that, that's why they created other projects.
It is, and that is our job, is to balance those interests because, you know, just like with the, the short-term rental equation is when people buy that house next to the house that then turns into a short-term rental. There are those implicit, you know, rights that they assumed when they purchased into a single-family residential district with certain, you know, codes. And obviously all of that, you know, gets, it evolves over time. But to know that, that is sort of our job, is to try to balance accommodating. Because one of the interesting things about being on that county task force was knowing the mismatch of the housing, not just necessarily that we need more affordable, but we had too many folks like me in a big house without any children in it. And we, our housing supply, and you may say, Bob, that it's important for those people to afford their taxes, absolutely. But there's also an importance, we need a little bit of turnover. I mean, it's just, that's the natural thing, so that the next family can occupy the family-sized house. And not that we're trying to figure out every time how to creatively keep a single person in a four-bedroom, free-bath, or whatever it is type of house. So it's, these are, you know, sensitive topics and important topics. But I do think that the governor has a right, we need to build. There are two words in smart growth, and we need to remember that, growth is one of those words. And so I think we've done it sort of relatively intelligently with our existing comprehensive plan. We look forward to seeing how we can incorporate these ideas into the update. And as you know, we've got a grant to update the comp plan so that we can, you know, solicit more public input on that.
I have a question on the topic of the accessible dwelling units, or accessory dwelling units. Recognizing the capacity of the committee and not wanting to give you a mandate that you don't feel able to fulfill, like, certainly not with a timeline. But do you have the sense that there are, like, if we said, committee, could you come back to us with a list of established best practices around ADUs in particular? Do those exist? Or is there like sort of squishiness of, you know, I mean, what Robert's referring to obviously is true, that you need to strike a balance. But is this a case where we would have to invent that balance or is it, is it established?
So there absolutely are, and there's different shades, right? So there are communities that are doing things that are well beyond what I think this community would conclude they want to do, right? But there are also things, like I was saying, the Housing Smart Initiative over in Ulster County, like, they've got a blueprint and it's meant to be adapted. And I think public engagement and involvement is how you do that and get the consent you need, I think, to move forward. But yes, there, there is that. You know, and some of the other challenges, you mentioned that there's been a lot of growth here and you did share some information. But what I noticed as a kind of data person, is I couldn't tell what was an ADU or not. I, I looked at the county data, tax parcel data, I couldn't find it. And so it's because it's not being tracked. So among the best practices also are just understanding sort of where is this occurring, under what conditions? And then there's a, I think another best practice is to have a sense, and this is something we would have liked to do as a committee, but is beyond, I believe, at least at this point. It's beyond something that we can focus on, even though we might be able to do it. It's because of the time. But it's understanding what is the inventory of your current zoning, and especially as you look to change them. What is, what is allowed, like, in which places? And I saw this done for Tiffly recently as they were talking about ADUs and working, you know, they're sort of hashing out a plan with not as much involvement as people in Tiffly wanted, I think. And what the people from Tiffly tomorrow, a group of folks showed was, this is a great, this sounds great, but if you apply this to our town, seven parcels can do what you're describing right here. And 15 can do this and stuff. And so I feel like there are best practices, there does need to be kind of a second step of analyzing what that really looks like. And certainly getting the consent from folks in the community to move forward with this and getting their input is another part. All of these things take a lot of time, but starting with best practices, I think there are those and we can start kind of with our feet, you know, running.
Well, anything we can do to streamline our code so that it's clear to folks that they know that they want to come in and do an ADU and it's allowable. I mean, I think we need to do that, whether it's ADU or any other type of development, if it's in the traditional neighborhood district, I think we have very specific codes there. I think that's all helpful so that they don't have to go through a lengthy process. So I think those are good recommendations, yeah. And I, I would, I'm sure we can come up with some, or you can share with us some ADU initiatives going around. Certainly, you know, we're familiar with one that state is, is doing, a farm labor. We thought we were getting a farm labor grant, unfortunately, we didn't get it.
Foreign labor?
Yeah, farm, farm labor.
Farm labor. How we doing with the Brookdale project on the north end of town at this point?
Well, maybe next week we'll have something, you know, to, to report, hopefully soon.
Well, I have kind of been interested in that, as you all know.
I know you do, and that's why I know you want central sewer, Bob Ross, because neither the north or the south can happen really to its full potential.
Well, the north is probably going to come first.
Well, that's fine, none of it's coming because there's no capacity for additional development on the plant right now. So we need to, we need to, and that's why we're applying for additional capacity funds. And so is the village to make sure that the north and the south can accommodate additional housing where we want it and in transit-oriented.
Yeah, I got a question too, guys. If I look at the town overall, our kindergarten class has dropped to 100 students. Did you think that?
Well, that's May 8th, I said the budget expo, you can go to the school district and talk to them about that.
What, what's going on? I mean, they said positive.
Household size across America is now 2.5.
Yeah, who can afford to have kids if you can't afford to have a home?
Right.
It's horrible, it's horrible.
I'm going to ask that we move along because we have our engineer here. If we have any questions about our next item, and she's got a long drive up and we want to make sure she makes it.
We really appreciate all this.
But I just want to thank you all really for all your work. And please, you know, give us marching orders about what you think, you know, maybe out of this list we should work on. Recognizing that we can't necessarily tap the state for all the various programs at the same time, it just doesn't work that way. They'll grant us for this, and maybe in a couple of weeks they'll grant us a lot if we're lucky, so.
One, one last thing that I forgot to say is that, and on that, is that we feel like partnerships are really, really important because you can't do it all. And I know you can't ask for the grants for it all, but Duchess County, we, we need more help, I think, from the county, and we don't have a housing coordinator right now. Ulster County, where I work, there's a lot more of that going on. And so that's another thing I feel like we can do.
I think they're prioritizing it over there in Ulster County, aren't they?
They are, yeah.
And you can see a difference. I'd like to say too that, you know, this is all great information and I appreciate your, all your work. And it is hard to keep people engaged on committees and, you know, sometimes everybody thinks things are going to happen quicker than it does. So thank you all for sticking with it. You know, some of the things that we have been able to do recently, like some of the preservation projects and the creativity we're doing, trying to do on the Cookingham property, you know, is because we always try to look, look to longer-term goals, even when we're looking at short-term things. So I would just encourage you to, you know, maybe pick one or two longer-term items and give us some input on those now so that we can start working on some of the long-term stuff. So it's not five years down the road before we start working on longer-term things. So you had a couple of things, like community land trust, like revise zoning, yes, we all know it's going to take a long time. But you had community land trusts, you know. So if you could give us some information on that, that we could maybe start working with or evaluating now, so maybe in two years, 18 months, two years or something, maybe ready to do something with a community land trust if we decide that works, rather than waiting to even start it for two years and then it's like another two years after that before it even happens. And there might be other things that you've talked about, yeah.
There will be more.
Yeah, there might be other things that you've talked about in committee long-term ideas that you didn't bring up tonight. So I guess I would just encourage you to think about maybe one or two of those that you could kind of keep feeding us stuff on so we can get that prep work started while also shorter-term stuff for, you know, how we categorize things. But, you know, we have to, we have to have the, the plans in place to be ready when something. something comes up.
That was the beauty of Cookingham, the Cooking at Farm, because you guys already had a plan, so that when it showed up, it was easy to make connections.
Exactly.
There's no sewer though. We all got sewer to get the dinner.
Oh, that's, you know, all that happens, like, with that.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Brandy, while you're still awake.
I'm awake.
You're all good.
This is diagram. Unfortunately, the, the way this computer is acting here, it's not going to show me the whole thing, but for the folks at home, what we are proposing is to go out to bid on fencing and trail what essentially is farm roads, existing farm paths, improvements with stone dust. Here is the portion of the trails that we hope to open up later this year. As you see, it extends along the perimeter of the farmed area. For the folks at home, we want to remind you, we preserved permanently all of the lands that were being farmed on Cookingham Farm. Farms often have portions of it that is, that are not farmable and not being farmed. So to that extent, here we are. What you'll notice is this would extend the path to nowhere from.
The village?
The landing strip from Abrams Park. And it would delineate, the fencing would continue throughout Willowbrook Lane. It would go around here. As you know, we are getting estimates for an analysis. There's a soil, a former soil mine right here, a few acres, sits deep down. We've, looking at the potential of doing PV there, solar. Here is the pathway around the property. It would extend out onto the entrance at Mill Road. We might seek to try to work with the Oxf's Club to provide for some parking there, which is just a couple of hundred feet to the east here. And then it would circle around. I recommend when this is open, you go to this portion here and look at the beautiful mountain views. And here it is on Willowbrook Lane, and the fencing would extend all the way. Do we have it extending all the way to the, to the, approximately four inches of stone dust throughout to provide stable environment and make it accessible? So we have, any questions for Brandy so we can let her go on her journey before we entertain?
I had a materials question, which actually popped into my head as I was reading my packet, and I got to the recreation department report, where they're, they're dealing with some washouts over in Rec Park East of the stone dust pathway. And I just, I don't, is stone dust the most sort of resilient material to use in a situation like this? Or are we going to be talking to you again in a year when it's all sort of floating somewhere else?
So the, the town has quite a few stone dust paths, and there are certainly instances where if the graves are steeper and drainage channels along that particular area, that you can get some limited washout. I'm going to just honestly say, any material is going to need maintenance at some point in time. We did go back and forth looking at a couple of different types of materials, and this is generally easy to install, relatively cost-effective, and gives you a nice staple even surface. Right now, if you, you've been out there, you know, there's like wheel rust, so we really just want to smooth that surface out.
And so following up on that, so I was, you know, thinking like, how is that going to stand up to farm equipment?
So we are not proposing that the farm equipment would run along those paths. We're providing for gates for access to the fields.
The way it's been designed.
But there still would have to cross.
Yeah, there's some crossing.
Right, so how would it?
They cross at Willowbrook.
Yeah, the crosses are at Willowbrook, which is made of a different material and has, has been used.
I would be.
So we're not changing, only the fencing's going around Willowbrook?
It's a.
It's a little hard to tell, bringing a little magic.
Yeah, it's, it is super hard to tell in here, but we've got a series of fences along Willowbrook Lane to allow access into each of the areas that are currently agriculture and that have been preserved for agriculture.
Yeah, it just wasn't cleared up that we were not proposing to change the surface of Willowbrook.
I got you, no, we're, yes, that's correct. Willowbrook would remain as.
It's gravel, and it's been working well with, with tractors on it all the time.
Could a member of the public ask a question, or no?
Did you identify a member of the public?
Pardon me, doll.
You're talking to the person, Hart. Go ahead. What's your question?
I was just wondering if you look the other, I know there's an easement that goes to Mill Road, but I'm thinking of where the elementary school is and where the middle school is, maybe even where I live and where my kids need to go. But also, I'm just wondering, you know, to, to get from Abrams Park, and then you go over to the right and you get to Mill Road, and then you go back up Mill Road and get over. And I know it's private property, but I wondered if there was any look at easements going over kind of the more direct to Mill Road so that it could go directly to the school?
More direct to get to.
Do you want a pan up on the side?
So it'd be essentially, you go to Abrams Park and you come up this way, and then you come over like this, and then right at this corner, if there are any opportunities to get to Mill Road, which dog legs right there.
Mill Road Elementary, you mean?
Well, Mill Road, and then the elementary, yeah.
And so that would be like a trail leading up to your private property?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there's a, there's a few problems with that, but Brandy, did you want to respond?
Well, I was just going to say, the access to Mill Road is what was available based on the acquisition of the property. And most of Mill Road is frontage lots, unfortunately, so there are really limited areas. But there's also a wetland down in through the low-lying area next to the soft hill, so we've been trying to avoid that as well.
My mother-in-law lives right there, so there, I could talk to her. Thank you for, and there are any questions?
I think that'll be the quote for the night, and maybe I can talk to her, yeah.
And then also, just to clarify, that this particular proposal does not include any connection to Rec Park.
Right. So if you don't know, Hart, we, we plan to apply for funds to go over and to make it over to Rec Park. And then, right, and so there would be an opportunity to connect to the other trails on the west side, so then you can go through the soft hill trails, which, as you may or may not know, funding is now been appropriated for the boardwalks and the bridge necessary to complete that build-out, and then that'll ultimately connect with the Empire State Trails as well, so.
Oh.
Yeah. All good stuff. All right, we have a resolution to, Brandy, go home.
The, the resolution to advertise for bid.
Yes, to advertise for this.
Just have to fill in one of the bids we do.
The bids, I think we have them due at May tenth, if I'm not mistaken, right? May tenth, what was the time? The resolution thirty-one. What was the time you put in there, Hart?
I think it was ten o'clock, I'm sorry. It's in my head.
It sounds like it to me from what I read earlier.
Ten is a common time, it's either ten or ten-thirty.
Well, it's in the agenda.
It's, it's in the invitation of the bid list.
Ten AM.
Ten AM it is. So resolution thirty-one, plans have been prepared, solicit the solicitation of public bids, I assume.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Brandy needs to go home. All in favor, Julia?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Hi. Want a coffee for the rep?
No, I'll be fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
All your work, as always, we appreciate it. Okay. Unfortunately, we are not dismissed. We've got to do our mini excavator IMA.
Robert, can you sign off on these students who attended our meeting?
Oh.
Can we take a pause for that? I think it sounds, I think it sounds great. They suffered a lot.
You got your hour thing.
Yeah, we, they have a bedtime.
I thought you were there just as you were fascinated.
I'm waiting to hear about the mini excavator.
Were you? Did, 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 did we inspire you?
There's a, I'm going to be an excavator, and I'm going to be your part.
You need to have workman's comp sure, by the way, to do work, so, you know. Exactly. Brandy, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Kyle?
Yep.
You picked an interesting meeting.
Yeah, we did.
Quite the line, I can't just.
Thanks for coming, overnight.
Have a good night.
Did anybody notice it was oh-four, two-four, two-oh, two-four? That was the other day where it was, just looking to do it forwards and backwards, right? Four-twenty?
That time you hear?
I know what you're thinking, four-twenty. Okay, termination of mini excavator, item number eight. As part of the agreement years ago, to share a mini excavator when deciding to remove ourselves from that shared agreement, we need to provide the other municipality use with some notice, and therefore we have resolution number thirty-two, having the termination where in possession of our own. Mini excavator worked out very nicely, by the way, for the period of time that we did share one. And so we are finding, and obviously, we've had some discussion about climate change impacts and how we fund highway department activities. So some of the equipment will need to be mindful of, will need to go towards things like clearing the roads of trees as opposed to of snow. And we've talked about replacing infrastructure, culverts, and so on and so forth. So I think it's really timely that we got our own mini excavator, for example, and we understand what we can do internally in Pars Park to help alleviate some of their, you know, issues. That mini excavator, I think, is going to be critical. So let me stop talking for a change and obtain resolution thirty-two, authorizing the termination of the IMA regarding the shared mini excavator. And we're giving written notice of the termination to the other towns, ninety-day notice, and you're authorized and need to do so. And I assume.
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. All in favor, Christine?
One quick thing, just as.
Yes, please do.
This is from twenty sixteen, was when we originally did the agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
And that agreement has technically expired. So it's, like you said, it worked out, worked out well while we were sharing the equipment, but the timing looks out well to withdraw. So if it's, you know, term, it was called termination of the agreement, but we're actually withdrawing from, from the agreement at the recommendation of our harvest superintendent.
Yes. Thank you for.
So I.
So I. I think three I's. Do we have any more I'm missing?
I.
Thank you very much. That's resolution thirty-two, we're on number nine. I don't know how much discussion you're ready to have yet, but so Julia, how, how well-versed are you on operating an in-vessel aerobic composter?
Yeah, well, so I actually have been in a situation where, where the, the university that I worked for had one of these, and it was a while ago, so I think the technology may have advanced, but it was not straightforward. There was a significant ongoing maintenance cost and headache.
Oh, really?
In terms of keeping it functioning properly and dealing with the, you know, there were some sort of specifications around what and how material could be added to it.
What you put in it, right.
And making sure you had adequate volume, but not too much volume. And so I would just want to make sure that we understood what we were getting to before we chose to take on that long-term obligation.
And do you know what one of these devices costs?
I don't know. I'm sure there are different scales, you know, based on how much.
Well, I only ask because of, of the amount of the grant and what our match has to be, you know, and what capacity we would need to have based on what we're currently getting over the transfer station.
Right, but I don't know if someone at the CAC in combination with folks at the transfer station might be able to give us sort of some recommendations based on what we know now.
Yeah, I, I, I mentioned this to Lori, that we welcome some input from the CAC. We have time, or if this is not due for a while, if we were to be interested, obviously, folks, you should know we have a composting program at our recycling center, those participate. Hard Scrabble Scrappers, what does Lori call it? Lori, something like that. Yeah, terrible name. But great, great program. No, I get it, scrapping, are you food scraps, scrappers?
Bringing my scraps over this morning.
I get it, it doesn't quite flow off of the top.
You could do your own.
I know.
I mean, I would say, I think one of the advantages of that program as it stands now is that it's very inclusive of what you can contribute, and I think, I think that's an advantage over home composting and backyard composting, so I would also have those questions.
I think that the example that Lori gives frequently is that you can do bones, for example. So it's one of the things that you don't have to think about sorting things out. If it's organic food waste, you could put it into the compost bins at the recycling center, goes over to Ulster County, we do it. And we're actually going to be having some of the compost from, comes back. What we've been doing is going back starting this Saturday. So it's been a pretty successful program in terms of participation and the amount of greenhouse gases that have been diverted from our waste system. But the question of whether having this equipment is a separate thing from what we're doing currently.
Well, also, you know, we pay, we sign the vouchers, I think it was at five-thirty-something per month for that. Be interested to get an idea, if we know what size of equipment we get, where's the break-even point on that? Or, you know, is it worth it just to say what we're doing now?
Yeah, or maybe there's a combination, right? Maybe it's something where we have one way where we can collect more of that waste than we can work for a system like this with fewer bins, for example. It's something you consider. I think that Lori would be happy to think about this, and she's really passionate about it, so. And Julia, I know that if you have experience, maybe it'd be nice to have you involved in that conversation too.
Yeah, I'd be happy to be involved in the conversation.
And I know you know those people.
Do we know if this is the type of system that, you know, sometimes you'll get materials that say they're compostable, but only in a commercial system? So is this the type of system that would accommodate that or not? Do we know?
Probably not. I know that the, the program we currently use, it is still just food waste, right? So it shouldn't be those additional, like a Sun Chips bag or whatever, like the materials like that.
Certain kinds of paper plates and stuff like that.
And, and people who are participating in the program are generally advised to not use things like paper bags or something like that to line some things, so it is meant to be food waste. So I'd be surprised if there were things like those commercial compostable things.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, applications.
There's a whole list in the program.
When do they do?
Sorry, due June seventh. So we do have a little time to get some input from the CAC, and gives you time to reconnect with your former university and say, how's it going?
Right, has technology improved?
Yeah. Well, I'm sure technology has improved.
Or you do it the old one.
All right, all right, exactly. Well, speaking of which, there was an old one, right, that went to Bard, right? Am I not mistaken?
I'm just looking to make sure that the.
Yeah, digester.
Yeah, Bard, the digester.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, Lori will tell you all about it.
Yeah. Nothing smells worse than a digester like that.
Okay. We have department board and committee reports, and Bill's allowed to give his, because he's quick. Christine's not allowed to give hers.
It's long.
All right, building and zoning.
It's always the thickest, and I'm just trying to make it the shortest. So the month of April, when the fifty-one building permits issued, they conducted twenty-five inspections, issued twelve, even certificates. they issued 12, even certificates of occupancy or completion, they received two complaints, and they generated $33,364 in revenue from the permitting, half of that was from Hart College, the, the list, um, and, you know, despite what some people think, we're, there's still plenty of building going on here in the town, um, and the, the list, you know, you can go by property by property, see what people are doing, what they're applying for.
Right.
The next one is the police, monthly police, we have report from March, uh, they had 106 incidents, uh, incidents that they responded to, they, a lot of traffic tickets, they issued 37, which is kind of like, no parking tickets, um, and they made two arrests, one of which I witnessed, because I just happened to be there at the meet, coming around the post office, um, they, they give the list of all the different types of calls, it was a particularly busy month for, um, welfare checks, maybe one of the busiest I've seen, but, um, important services, I will always reiterate that, um, they do save lives with the welfare check because people are concerned about a relative, a friend, a loved one, they're trying to call them, they're not calling back, uh, you know, there's mental health issues, there's citizen issues, people falling down, they can't get up, that kind of stuff, and so they go and they make a difference, and it's important, um, and they're kind of busier than I, than we've seen in a long time, so that's it for the police report.
Great. Um, no, you haven't.
You ready?
You have never been truthful when you said you would make it quick with the rec.
Actually, this is, you know, it's pretty short for the rec department, so, and a lot of what they've been working on is, can be summarized as prepping the parks to open and be, um, ready, so, you know, grooming the fields, repairs to the turf field, getting the snack bar ready, um, you know, garbage cans, recycling, all of that is well underway. Um, the LED lights in the south parking lot were changed, so that's gonna be a nice, uh, more efficient thing, but also probably brighter, um, all the picnic tables have been painted and are ready to go and have been placed around the, the parks, um, our newest addition, which was the winter pickleball at the, um, former Eddie Parker Center, is almost done because it ends on, uh, April 26th, um, which is this weekend, I think, and because then in theory the park, uh, it'll go back to outdoor play.
Yeah.
So 86 people have participated in the winter program, so that was great, I think. Um, the fishing contest, uh, the annual fishing contest was held, um, I don't have numbers in here about how many people participated in that, um, we're still waiting on those acoustic park panel installations, um, around the pickleball courts, um, as Julia mentioned earlier, there were some problems, um, with washout of the stone dust walking track, uh, around the, of the park near the baseball fields, um, we have installed a, um, handicap accessible portable toilet, a porta potty, um, at the park, uh, now, that just came in.
That's on the park west, just for clarification.
Right, the park west, sorry, thank you.
Restroom on that side, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, believe it again or not, again, already gearing up to get ready for the summer rec program, um, always there's changes and updates that have to happen every year, so they're working on that, and investigating, um, other possible additions to what we have, um, as far as equipment and activities at the rec parks, um, still doing some, are still waiting for some supplies to complete the repairs to the men's room, uh, in the bathroom in rec park east, that was a result of some vandalism that we had, and, um, the drinking fountains will be, and the hydrants will be turned on, um, any day now, um, and some of them are expensive, like we have a drinking fountain at, near the snack bar that costs $6,000, that drinking fountain to be vandal-proof and damage-proof, and so, you know, it's expensive, there's expensive stuff there.
Nothing's cheap.
Um, and the high school, um, baseball games still have started already on, um, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and that's pretty much it, that's pretty quick as far as the rec park goes.
You know, Christine, that was, that was your best, yeah.
Thank you. Well, like I said, it was much there.
Paying your time for the.
It's the beginning of the season, right, exactly, you just wait, you just wait.
Okay, so two things that I want to mention, is that, um, you know, they need a new gator and they're getting an electric one, so that's very exciting, um, the other thing was, you know, that, uh, as part of the, uh, school propositions, you know, there's discussion about the, they're, they're looking to fund, um, that synthetic turf field, um, and there was some discussion on social media about, well, the school pays the town X amount of dollars, um, for, uh, you know, use of the field, the implication from reading it was, if they construct this field, that there won't be the need to pay the town, of course, this is a shared service, which we do to the benefit of all taxpayers, is to take a look at how we might increase the utility of any type of service, um, and certainly, um, because the taxpayer groups are not exactly the same.
Right.
Because the school district extends, it's important for budgetary reasons that, um, their share of what is essentially exclusive use, which nobody else enjoys, um, that they pay only their proportional amount, and they're not even paying anything extra for that exclusive, you know, first come, first served scheduled use of those fields, um, but I think it's important for the public to understand that the fees that they contribute towards the maintenance of those facilities is for a wide array of use, the tennis courts, the pickleball courts, on the volleyball, the softball fields, all of those uses will still remain if they decide to convert one field to, um, you know, an artificial surface, so I just want to, you know, again, it's for the public to decide if they want to go ahead and have, you know, that, uh, proposition passed, but I just want to make sure that folks don't have the, the misimpression that, um, that fee is going away if they go ahead and support that initiative, so, um, just want to make that clarification. Um, all right, uh, trees.
So for the April meeting, the tree preservation commission, I'm going to report, um, a few items are discussed, including eight trees being planted on Bud's Corners Road, three trees being planted on Knox Road, um, details for the Arbor Day celebration were finalized, which included nature walks, scheduled poster contests, volunteer luncheon, I'm sure that we'll hear the next one, well, not next, the next month about, um, how Arbor Day actually went, um, Tree City members, stickers were installed on the signs, we're at the 18-year mark, so really long history of being a Tree City, which is exciting, getting closer to 20 years, um, two committee members attend, attended the Tree City Recognition Luncheon in New Paltz, sure details of that event, um, and then Aspen Arbor Care Tree Service, was owned by Kuli Hay, who's a dedicated volunteer on the commission, has offered to donate services to prune dead wood from the trees in front of the town building, so, lots of good stuff, as always.
Great, thank you, Jacob. Um, and lastly, we have correspondence, uh, from several entities on, uh, the recently passed, very recently passed, and maybe not even completely finalized state budget, but, you know, some of the basic, uh, elements of the budget are now available, and so, you know, we'll review this and take a look at, um, how we may or may not, uh, benefit from some of the changes, it does appear, at least on a couple occasions, there might be some additional funding, whether it's CHIPS, um, and, uh, you know, some efficiency grants, uh, look to be a little higher, aim, um, temporary bump in that, and then the, the various different programs and how they may, uh, be impacted by the budget, so take a look and, and, uh, let's see how it guides us, um, for the rest of the year, from a budget perspective and also from a grant perspective.
Well, maybe I missed it, but, um, would you be able to send this as a separate PDF and email, it was probably in the updated packet, but it was.
It's just.
We need to have it as a standalone.
And I think, I think Deanna sent it to us.
Oh, I thought.
Oh, was that the one that you sent? Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, I've got it.
I thought Deanna sent it.
I don't think I actually am on that list right now, I was.
Yeah, I don't think I got it, I got it from Deanna, but no, I don't think.
Oh.
Thanks, Deanna.
Yeah, good.
Thank you, Deanna.
All right. Good.
You tried.
Very good, well.
I didn't realize this.
All right, and there's another one that came through.
Alice Wolf sent this.
Okay, that's right, we got some information about the.
Right, on Rose Salt, so, uh, Jacob, you're the lays on to the highway department, can you find out from our highway superintendent, um, whether there's an interest in funding that equipment so we can have that tool, the brining, um, in the department's toolbox, obviously, when they go and determine when it's appropriate to bring the roses up to them, but it would seem to me, um, as we discussed earlier at a previous meeting, that, you know, it would benefit all of us if we did fund, um, you know, that equipment in order to do that, um, and I'd like to do that sooner rather than later, so we have it available for next winter, um, especially since there's dollar savings and environmental benefits.
And just to be clear, this is for operating additional funding, which we have, not pulling from their current.
Exactly, yes, it'd be additional funding, uh, because like everything else we've been doing, whether it's buying our streetlights or creating our own clean energy, um, the savings over, um, not even really the long term, the medium term, or slightly longer than short term, um, have really paid off for us, which is why our general tax.
Right.
No, our, our dollars, I did an analysis for a taxpayer, um, if your property value didn't change because of any improvements or whatever, you're paying 7% less in actual dollar terms for your town taxes than you were in 2016, and here we are in 2024, so a lot of these environmental investments that we've been making have turned out to be, uh, financial winners as well.
Just as a practical matter, it can take a very long time to go through procurement processes, you're not inexpensive pieces of equipment, so, you know, and the winter will be upon us before.
Sooner rather.
Later, so I think it's one of those things that, you know, if they, something you want to do, then we really want to get started.
All right, so Jacob, can you do that between now and next meeting, and let's get a okay or not from Teresa?
I won't be able to make the next meeting, but I'll get some information.
We'll miss you, but we want the information.
Sure. One person to ask about whether we do your ass.
Very good. Um, okay, well, here we are at 10:18, and, um, I would like to thank everyone for joining us at home, I'd also like to thank all of the volunteers and all of the businesses that participated in the many community events, town community events that we've had, it was quite a run, and it hasn't yet ended, but we had a, we started with a trifecta of events, one weekend, and then had two the next weekend, and, um, a drive electric, for example, I'd like to very much thank Ruby's, who brought five vehicles for test drive, uh, Romeo on the other side of the road, who brought four, and all the individuals who brought all their electric vehicles, it was a terrific event, um, people enjoyed trying out the, the new models especially, and there are more and more models coming on the market, um, we, uh, let's see, last, uh, last but least, uh, we do have shred day coming up on June 8th, remind you that apple blossom day is coming up on May 11th. Okay, the bad news is I have to make a motion that we go into attorney-client session just for a few minutes, my friends, um, and I want to wish you all at home a good night and happy holiday, if it applies to you, please stay safe and healthy.
Second?
I'm waiting.
Second.
But good luck with this vote, Robert.
Yeah, it's gonna be close, uh, all in favor, Robert, all in favor, Robert, all in favor, uh, Julia?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Jacob, bye.
I forgot what your name is.
Goodnight, everyone.
I'm sorry.